Welcome to the Hyde Park's Board of Education meeting for February 28th. Could everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no agenda modifications. Can I have a motion for the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Close, motion carries. Upcoming events: On March 1st, Friday tomorrow, is the District Steam Expo and Science Fair at FDR. On Friday, March 8th, will be a superintendent's conference day, and no school for students. And Thursday, March 14th, will be the next Board of Education meeting here at the district office.
May I? We updated it to Ed Barnum. Yeah, go for it Denise, you want to do it?
Barnum, right, I just thought the school musical is the weekend of March 14th? Is that the right date?
It ends on the 17th, so it's...
Okay, so it's St. Patrick's Day weekend, and it's going to be great, it's going to be wonderful. I haven't had a chance to watch any of the rehearsals, but I just have full faith in everybody, and I can't wait to go myself, so please join me and see it as many times as you can, because I'm sure it'll be great.
And we provide a senior citizens free performance on Thursday, followed by a lunch for a nominal fee provided by our food service department. You don't have to do both, but what's that?
That's for Doug.
That's for Doug. And also, just one bit of infomercial about our FDR musical Barnum this year. We have a woman in our community that actually had possession of the piano that was in the original Barnum on Broadway, and she has donated it for use in the production. So, a little bit of history, joining our students on stage. Also, our students have been taking circus lessons in order to prepare, so again, a little bit unusual. It's not unusual to have a choreographer come in and teach kids how to dance, but to have students actually go and take circus lessons across the river, so it'll be quite a show.
Okay, continuing with Pride. Patrick?
Okay. So, it's a big year for the states. A lot of our teams are going to states this weekend. So, the gymnastics team, they were also the section nine and Mahal champs this year. Shannon Kelly, Clara Patton, and Angela Anthony are competing at states this weekend. Boys swim, they placed sixth out of 16 teams at sectionals. Jackson Morelli, Robert Reining, Ryan Spear, Dan Berger, and Kush Patel are all competing at states this weekend. For the bowling team, their states is March 8th and 9th, so it's not this weekend. Austin Trainor is competing, and Andrew Temple is going down as an alternate. The girls cheerleading team is competing this weekend. They were also the section nine champs for the third year in a row. And winter track is competing this weekend. They were the boys and girls Mahal champions, and Sarah Trainor and Paul Sanford are competing. And so, we had a number of teams receive the Scholar-Athlete Team Award, and to receive this, 75% of the team has to have a GPA of 90 or above. So, the teams that received that this winter were the girls basketball, girls bowling, cheerleading, boys swimming, gymnastics, and boys and girls indoor track. So, that's a lot of teams that got that. Girls varsity basketball, they were the Mahal champs, and they're playing right now in the sectional semifinals at Cornwall. And over at Netherwood, the first graders, they've been learning about the community in which they live, and also about their school community. They interviewed some members of the Netherwood school community, and they were able to gain firsthand knowledge of their responsibilities. They also had opportunities to ask other burning questions. And at Ralph R., Friday, so tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30, is the annual PJ night in the gym. Bring your pillow and blankets to hear some stories. And that's it.
Is there any other Pride?
There were three STEM fairs last week. Gurr and I were both at all three. I just have to mention the Ralph Smith students who wanted to see how long it took a McDonald's hamburger to acquire mold, and it turns out, never. Which is, it's kind of scary, think about that. But, all events were well-attended. We had a lot, I had a lot of fun. I know, it's good to see the students there with their parents, all excited, so I think that's a really good thing. There was one event that didn't technically Hyde Park one, but Dutch County Music Education All County Middle School performances at Haveland on Saturday from 2:00 to 3:30. And if you want to see young kids that can really play, you'd be amazed.
Barry, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
I just had one thing, source of pride this week. The valedictorian and salutatorian were named. Tito Maresca is our valedictorian for the class of 2019, and Luke Hart is the salutatorian. And this week, it should become public who the top 20 are. But, congratulations to Tito and Luke. Their pictures are up on the website. Both extraordinary young men. Tito has already signed on for Cornell, and Luke at Marist. So, keeping them close by too, so, great school.
Okay, on to superintendent's report.
Okay, I do have a few things. Each year, I don't know why in education they call it this, but each year we receive something called bullet aid, and it's not a given. We don't ever know if we're going to get it. It's sort of excess, not excess, but available funds that towards the end of the year, as they become freed up, they dole them out to the school districts. So, this year, we again received $50,000. And some of you may recall, Doug was there at the ribbon cutting at Violet Avenue Elementary School. We put in a new playground. Well, going to the playground, you have to go down a set of crumbling steps, and over a basketball court that the blacktop is completely disintegrated, as well as the lines that have been painted for our peaceful playground classroom. So, this year, with the help of Elliot Sheldon and Deanna at Violet Avenue, we are putting the money toward completing the overhaul of the outdoor space at Violet Avenue. So, I got a Violet Avenue teacher here ready to roll, so it will be nice. And there's also a set of stairs at the back of the school that needed repair, so we're going to fix those as well. So, that's our aid that came in. On March 11th, there's a public hearing on the Saki Plant in Hyde Park, the old Stop and Shop, and I believe Carl is going to go to that meeting, because we'll be with the town supervisor at another meeting. So, that's that public hearing. Some of you may recall that we had PESH visit us, the employee, Public Employee Safety and Health Organization. Normally, their turnaround time for their report to us is very quick. You may also recall that in, throughout New York State, PESH was called quite a bit about mold and environmental issues. So, two things happened. One, they got super, super busy, and the woman who ran our neck of the woods in projects actually had an accident, so she was in recovery. So, this may seem like old news, but we finally got the report. We had two paper citations, two non-serious paper violations. One, the first, so they're posted for three days, they've been posted, and they have to be remedied. One was about the log of health reports that has been remedied. Nothing really to do with this at hand, but there's a number of things that they have to look at every time they come in. So, Linda has remedied the logs that they were looking for, that we have to provide. And actually, yeah, for two of them, it was just a summary of the log. And the other, sometimes you just learn about something that you should have, and this was good. We had no violations in how we handle our hazardous materials, but we did not have the comprehensive written plan. BOCES has a comprehensive written plan that we follow, but we don't have one that says Hyde Park Central School District that we follow. So, we will take the comprehensive hazardous materials plan and put our name on it, and if there's anything we need to customize for us, we will. So, again, two non-serious paperwork violations. So, they found, in other words, they found nothing for which the complaint was filed that brought PESH in. Sorry, one more. I attended a Poughkeepsie Town Hall meeting last night. They invited the four superintendents in for a portion of their meeting, and they had members from their planning board, the town board. Michael Welty spearheaded the project. Title is eluding me right now. Basically, they wanted to hear from the four superintendents that geographically have a piece of their district in the town of Poughkeepsie, and they wanted to hear about our enrollment, our construction projects, our futures. And it was a chance to just open up about, have an open dialogue about what we're seeing. They wanted to hear our opinion about commercial development, as well as residential development. It was, it was nice to be invited in and have that conversation, and put some faces to names. And all four superintendents, Arlington, Spackenkill, myself, and Wapingers were present. And we were, they set it up very nicely to have the four of us be able to engage in a dialogue about the future of enrollment and development, both economic and residential.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, we'll have the capital project update. Lou Rodriguez from Project Manager Plumb, Plumb Group, I can't get it off.
We also have CSR here too, so...
Hey guys. I don't know, Dan, do you want to start with the SED part first, and then I'll talk construction?
Sure. Hello, just a quick update on schedule. So, late January, as scheduled, we had submitted North Park Elementary School to the state education department. We, as you recall, it was decided that we would submit that for third-party review. So, we initiated that process. The engineers that reviewed the project are actually Felinsor Engineering. They turned the comments around very quickly, and we responded, the first round of comments to, our addendum went to them by February 22nd. We just received today a couple minor clarifications that we'll be working on and getting turned back around, so we should have approval on North Park fairly shortly. It does have to go back to the state education department for final, final review and approval. They will not conduct a full review. We had gotten, we had received that word from Roseanne Groff in a direct phone call with her, that they would not send it back through a whole nother review. So, that's all very good news. We also submitted FDR and Haveland. They went in just after President's Day on schedule. They were submitted to go through the normal queue. So, at this time, unless a decision is made somewhere through the summer to change course, right now, state education department's looking at about 46 weeks for engineering review to be complete. We will likely get comments on, from the architects there within eight to 10 weeks, but the engineers are still quite far behind, or taking quite a long time, even with the third-party process that was supposed to shorten the overall timeframe, but hasn't. So, we will keep everybody posted when we get the official North Park approval, but we should be looking for that fairly soon. So, I think Lou will talk about a strategy moving forward in terms of bidding that project. Thank you.
I'm back. So, right now, what we're looking at is, with an assumption of an approval coming soon, we would look to get out to bid the third to fourth week of March. That's going to give our team enough time to do a final review of the docs, do final scoping and scheduling. Looking at a four-week bidding cycle, we would probably look to get in front of the board by your meeting of, I believe you have a meeting on May 9th. That's your first meeting in May. That gives us about a week, week and a half to qualify the low bidders. If for some reason, there is a push, or if SED looks to do any more of a review, more than what's being talked about, then we'd probably come back for your May 23rd board meeting. But right now, we'd probably shoot to hit the May 9th meeting. If that goes well, and we have a formal notice to proceed that comes after the May 9th meeting, we would kick off with the contractors. The first thing we're really looking to do for this summer is anything that would be any hazmat-related, something that really allows us to continue work throughout the school year. So, I just want to be clear that, you know, this summer, there will be no mechanical installations or anything like that happening, just due to shop during, submitting on approval process, lead time in manufacturing. With a May approval, or a May award, should I say, we wouldn't have equipment onsite until the earliest would be late August on this project. So, what we're really looking to do is get into the buildings, open up spaces, again, deal with any hazmat that we would encounter during the year, try to, you know, take care of that. Also, do any demolition or removals in the ceiling side that would allow us to continue working in that building. Now, the current system that you have, your heating system is going to stay in place throughout the year. What we're actually doing is building your new system in parallel with your existing system. So, for example, your boiler, your boilers right now is a steam boiler. There is a boiler conversion, we're going to be converting that boiler from steam to hot water. That boiler conversion, however, cannot happen until the summer of 2020, when the whole building is actually coming off of steam and going to hot water. We're not going to convert your building to hot water now, when a lot of your heating components will not, you know, for hot water, wouldn't be in place. So, during the school year, the plan would be to run hot water supply and return lines, and the equipment that we're installing is going to be, a lot of it's going to be from the top, it's going to be rooftop air handling units, and it's going to be a fully ducted system, and there's going to be radiant heat on the perimeter. So, there's going to be quite a bit of work that we can do during the school year to get up to speed. The idea would be, hopefully, in the spring, would be maybe to get that building up and running as far as the conditioned air that's coming through. I think there's the potential for doing that. And then, the summer would be to remove the current unit ventilators that are in place that are steam, your hot, your existing steam systems, all the removals are going to occur, and the final boiler conversion would happen in the summer of 2020 as well. And then, so that's really, when you look at the sequence of this building and how the construction's going to occur, I just want to be clear that this summer, there's not going to be conditioned air in that building. We're going to be working to really just establish ourselves so that we can work throughout the school year, second shift, and then try to see if we can have something up and running for the spring of 2020. And final commissioning and everything, soup to nuts, being completed by the summer of 2020.
And just to remind people while you're there too, that we have, we do have a plan in place through Elliot's department to monitor the environment and control the moisture and get the dehumidification process going and on schedule throughout this summer, so...
Correct. And in parallel with that, as Dan said, we've, you know, we've been doing the estimating and planning for the next phase. If we go the route that we're talking about right now, we'd be hoping to bid in the winter of 2019, 2020. So, December, January, if we can get out to bid with the next phase of work, that would really set us up for the next cycle of all the work that needs to be, that needs to be completed. So, if there's any questions.
Sure.
Turn off the mic.
So, what are we looking at? How many contracts we'll be awarding, or placing out to bid for the...
For the, for North Park?
Yeah.
We'll be looking at four?
Mechanical, electrical, general?
Yeah, right now, I have a general plumbing, HVAC, electrical, and hazmat.
Okay. Is there, I'm assuming we know the extent of the hazardous material? Is it extensive through the building, or is it spot locations?
It's spot locations, but yeah, I mean, right now, I got to get the final survey that's been completed and put a real number to it, but you're talking, you know, it's probably a good $100,000, $150,000 worth of work there, just on hazmat side.
Okay. Yeah, you know, just recognize that it's going to be a disturbance in the building this summer, you know, everybody's, it's going to be a lot of work, you know, getting everything out of the way, and if we don't, you know, people have to recognize that it's, they're not going to, they're not going to appreciate much of what's happening this summer, I guess is the best way of putting it.
Right, and also that the building will be closed.
Yes, they won't have access.
For a good portion of the summer, so we will be publicizing when it will be open for people to come in and get classrooms. Said it's not business as usual, you can't just come in throughout the summer, you know, we'll have to let them know when they can come in.
Yep, yep. Two other quick questions. So, the North Park Elementary, what was the dollar value for, as it went to SED for third-party review?
We're looking for that to come in at 2.2 million total.
Okay. And the...
2.2, not including contingency, that's, that's the street number.
That's construction cost.
That's, yeah, that's a hard bid number that we were, if we come below the 2.2, we're doing a good job.
Okay. And now, the FDR-Haveland work, what's considered to be the dollar value of that that's currently in review?
The FDR, we're at 13 million.
Okay.
And Haveland, we're at 3.7 million.
Okay.
Again, no, that doesn't include any construction contingency, that's where we're just, that's where we're sitting right now with the latest estimate.
Okay. And that's into SED now? Have they deemed the drawing, have they deemed it complete?
There's one pre-screening item on a die issue, it's just a building form that we needed to get completed, the backup, and so I'll finish our pre-screening.
Okay.
Set it up in queue.
Okay, so I'm sure, so we're looking, you know, shooting for a December-January approval, which is very timely for the sake of getting a bid, packaged bid, and ready for summer of 2020, yeah, 2020 construction. Right. And what do we anticipate the duration of that construction project?
Yeah, we're out to '22. December of '20, or, yeah, December of 2022.
Okay, so, okay.
I have a question, those numbers don't add up to '26. What's the...
No, they don't, because there's 10% in construction contingency that I'm holding, and then there's also the incidental cost, which is over, it's over 4, it's like 4.3 million in incidental costs.
There's a lot that gets added on to what the real construction costs are in the academic world.
I think people might be looking at this and add it up and say, wait a minute, I voted for...
Okay. I mean, I guess my only, my thought is, it's a little, you know, we're just a little bit tight, you know, if the review slips on that by a month or two, we could lose the summer. So, just...
Yeah, I think it's something we monitor, maybe the queue gets better. We haven't seen that happen over the last three years, but if it does, then we'll pick up some weeks. We still can make a decision at some point about third-party.
And I guess that's where I'm getting to, is that we want to continue to monitor that, and see at some point, it may make sense to pull the plug and make the commitment.
The summer, we can have a conversation at the end of the summer, and decide at that point whether it makes sense to go to third-party.
Yeah.
I thought that was, that was my understanding, that we would wait and hold off on possibly going for the third-party review for that.
We talked about it last time.
Right.
We had a definitive decision on it, yeah, but we would monitor.
But I also wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I also wanted to confirm that date. I thought we were talking about the 2021 year, not the 21, '22.
I'd have to go back and look. It could be, because we were phasing the pods, so it could be that we were doing a transition or final handover in December of 2021, but we're still into 2022, just on final closeout and stuff.
Oh, for completion?
Yeah.
Is what you're, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Yeah. And just, what would we expect the cost of the third-party review being? So, we're looking at 13 million and 3.7 million, so you're 16, 17 million?
I think it's 10%.
Okay.
I thought it was 10%.
No, it's not a percentage, it's a fixed, actually, I could pull it up. You know what? I can, I'll jump on the SED, yeah.
Goes up as the project gets bigger.
Oh, right, right, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, safe travels.
So, up next, we have our technology update from Rick Ward, Director of Technology.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
All right, so, I have two presentations this year, and that's Windows, there we go. This presentation is focused on the financial aspect of the Technology Services Department. So, just as an overview, we have three main funding streams that support technology in the district. One is, of course, our district budget. That also supports our BOCES and Mid-Hudson Regional Information Center, COSERS. Then we have E-Rate. E-Rate is money that's from the telecom, telecommunications industry. They are required to give a certain amount of money each year to school districts. For every dollar we spend through E-Rate funding, they kick in 80%, we kick in 20%, so there's still a cost to us. And generally, it's focused on what we call networking equipment. You can't just buy a laptop with it, it's limited to what you can buy in that. And then, of course, last one, the Smart Schools Bond Act, which has been going on for a couple years now. We spent a good portion of our allotment, and I'll have more detail about that... We spent a good portion of our allotment, and I'll have more detail about that coming down the road. That's very focused on instructional technology and networking infrastructure with our applications. What are we buying with all that? A lot of stuff, a lot of equipment, both instructional and non-instructional, software and subscriptions, it's kind of the new textbook, if you will. We're finding more and more requests for software, we're trying to be very prudent about that by making sure it's not just one person using this program, but multiple people, people using the programs. The management systems that we use throughout the district just to keep everything humming and moving along, they're throughout the transportation, food service, financial. We, of course, have some contractual expenses, that's usually people coming in to fix our servers, the big stuff that we don't have the staffing for. And of course, the consumable supplies, like this little pointer right here, that they seem to disappear frequently, so. So, when I came in to the position a couple of years ago, and I was looking at the costs involved with everything that was coming online, and I was wondering about some things I had never even heard about in the technology world, and I kind of asked, so what's the long-range plan? And there really was kind of an idea, but not a laid-out plan. So over the past couple of years, really, we've tried to develop a way to relatively flatten out the budget by planning for some of the bigger things. This doesn't represent everything, it represents the bigger things, like an Avigilon server. That is a smart bond application we have out there for about $200,000. That's not just something I want to put into a budget one year. The wireless APs in 2020, 2021, those are all those access points that are in every room throughout the district. You can't just replace one or two, because a whole system has to work together, so you have to replace the whole shebang. That's a significant expense. The wireless control you'll see in the next year is a very significant expense, so by adding the APs in one year and the control in another year, we tried to flatten out the cost. So this isn't perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but we're doing our best to keep the money level, so there are no just gigantic surprises one year to the next. So again, E-Rate, it's a five-year allotment, so what happens is when you start spending the E-Rate money, you have five years to spend that chunk of money. Technically, Hyde Park has allotted roughly $500,000, but again, there's a cost to us, there's a 20% cost for every one of those dollars. So I have $500,000 in purchasing power, the district has to cover 20% of that, so I have five years to spend, so we space that out. So in 2017, and the pictures kind of speak volumes, the one in the lower right-hand corner, that's the network rack that we purchased, and the very bottom of that rack, that very small black thing that's kind of hidden in, is an AC unit. What that's allowed us to do is protect our equipment, right? That's the same rack that's in the picture to the left, that's North Park Elementary in the back room of the library. It's not an air-conditioned space, and it's a closed room. So what happened is the network equipment heated up on a good July day, or even a June day, that room got upwards of 90, 100 degrees, and our equipment got to 110, 120. In networking world, that's really bad. So by creating, by buying these enclosed racks with an AC unit inside, we can keep the temperature and the humidity level. So it's extending the life of our equipment through a decent, so Bobby Calafano, who's this brilliant guy that works in the department, has been responsible for redoing all these racks. So that, one on the bottom, that's an example of what he's doing with that $150,000 purchase of network racks and AC units. He's done, I think, seven racks so far throughout the district, Violet Avenue, one at Havlin. The one on the top right, that's going to happen over spring break, that's the main closet at Havlin Middle School. And that spaghetti mess is a mess. He believes he can get that down to one or maybe two racks. A lot of unused equipment is in those racks right now that just need to be discarded and moved out, and we can get them air-conditioned and in a lot better place. So we're trying to protect the investments of all this expensive equipment in the best way we can. For 2019, what we're hoping to do is, one thing is our backup batteries. Backup batteries last about five years, and they're expensive, so we're spending a chunk of money just to replace our batteries and keep things going when there's power failures and everything else. The voice gateway is very expensive, that's a Cisco product, that's our phone system. It's not something we can just say, well, we don't feel like doing it, we need to replace that in order to keep ourselves viable. We're also looking at some replacement switches and looking at the network wiring, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, that's in reference to the FDR project. As we take apart the pods, we're going to impact the wiring throughout the building. So we're trying to look at some of the E-Rate money as a part of funding that project. The New York State Smart Schools Bond Act, some of the question was, where was this money allocated? It's roughly $2.6 million was allocated to Hyde Park. This is money from the state, it's no direct cost to the district, but it is a process. You fill out an application, you send that application to the state, there are six program offices that review that application. And what happens is, and this is the part that every tech director hates, you fill out the application, you submit it, it goes to your boss, who then you have to say, can you please approve that in the portal? And she goes, okay, and she approves it. It goes to the first program office, they comment on it, and send it back for revisions. And some of the revisions are, you missed a decimal point, capitalize this T and change this word. So you add up them again, and you go back to your boss and say, can you please resubmit? And she goes, why? Did you make a mistake? And you have to hang your head and shame. That goes on six times, minimum.
Yeah.
It's a tedious process. We had round one approved fairly quickly. Round one was $1.9 million, did a board presentation a couple of years on that, that was Chromebooks, flat-screen televisions, document cameras, some required money for our non-public schools, that's a required part of Smart Bond, and a lot of networking, too. So we were able to rewire some of our buildings in ways that really needed to happen. We spent almost all that money, there's $32,000 left in the networking component, that we could dedicate towards FDR. Round two, I mentioned before in a previous meeting last year about our video server needing a very serious upgrade, that's the upgrade. It is sitting in program review right now at the state, it's been there for several months, and my happy, hopeful news, I just noticed on the state website that March 6th is next meeting of the infamous gang of three, these are the guys at the state level who actually approve these applications. I don't know if we're on the list to be approved, I've got my fingers crossed. It's been a long time coming, it's a piece of equipment we really, really do need, we're just waiting for the money to be approved by the state. So you can see the breakdown on the right where all the money was spent, we recabled three buildings, North Park in particular, I'll talk about in a few moments. The interactive whiteboards, these are not interactive, but they're close to the size that's in every classroom throughout the district, they are used, and I would, I would pretty much say in every room throughout the district. The teachers do like them, I think they're going well, we've paired some nice new equipment with it, so it's simple and easy to use. The laptop computers, that's the Chromebook line, we have the one-to-one initiative, 6 through 12, Havlin and FDR, there's varying levels of adoption in the two buildings, and then we have carts at the elementary that are used fairly constantly. And then other costs like document cameras and such as that. Non-public money really went to St. Peter's. Projectors, that was mainly for St. Peter's, and also our auditorium projects at FDR and North Park funded that. Chromebook cases, just protect them, and document cameras. So that's kind of the breakdown.
Is it accurate to say some to the children's homes as well, some tech?
No, no.
No?
We do that through district loan.
Okay.
Yeah, not through Smart Bond, that wasn't a required component.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
So major projects coming online. I have not been to Violet Avenue this week, but that project is done, and what that means in their gymatorium, their main cafeteria, just like at FDR, you walk up, you plug your laptop in, the screen comes down, the projector comes on, the mic is on, you present, when you unplug, everything goes away automatically. It should be simple and easy and intuitive to use. Havlin Auditorium, that same thing's going to happen over spring break, and there'll be an upgrade to their sound system, which they have needed as well. FDR cafeteria screens, our first round of large-screen televisions ran into some technical difficulties, the company actually replaced them all under warranty, and as they've been struggling, we've been repurposing them. So what happens is the touch feature on them goes out. So what we've been doing is using them as large displays throughout the district, we're not throwing them out, we're using them. So in the cafeteria at the high school, the big one, there are four TVs around the room that can now show video feed. So Dan Hurley manages that as part of his digital media coordinator role. It's information for students, they can also, as we use them for training days, they become training sessions for the, for the presenters to use. New wireless computers, so under each of the screens, FDR has done, Chance Caswell, one of our technicians, is working through the middle school right now, we've put a very small, really powerful computer under each one with a wireless mouse and wireless keyboard. So no longer is a teacher tied to that screen, they can move that keyboard or mouse around the room, they can hand it off to kid, and the kid can do what they need to do on the screen. It's a little bit faster machine, so it can do better with video presentation, and it's just clean and neat, and there's not wires running everywhere. Video server, again, I talked about that, we're just waiting for approval. Improved network closets, I talked about with that with E-Rate, and revised end-of-year Chromebook collection process is a big initiative in the department. Last year, we focused on letting the kids have the laptops as long as we could, that was our, what we felt was most important. The downside of that was, is when we collected them the last week of school, we just collected them, and we didn't really look at the damage that happened to them at the time, so it got, it became problematic for parents to get this bill unexpectedly, saying they didn't even know that the Chromebook was damaged. Working with the principals, we're developing, it's going to require the Chromebooks we collect a little bit sooner, hopefully only, we're hoping to start, no, earlier than the second week of June, but it may have to take place all of June. We have a process where the kids will come in, we'll actually look at the Chromebook when it's turned on, inspect it for damage, hand the kid a slip with the damage, and notify the parents. So we're revising that just so we can protect the investment, keep the parents informed, really know what's going on with the devices. One project I'm really looking forward to, we worked with the District Save Committee on this as well, when we wired North Park, we were careful to put two drops over the televisions, one for the television and one for a clock PA system. What we know about our buildings is that the PA systems are original. So the wiring for the North Park PA system is from 1960, or whatever year the building was built. Having been at Netherwood, what I can tell you is that wiring is what goes. So at Netherwood, in June, if you walk and you'll see Francie Lemke in the back has the PA system unplugged, because if she leaves it plugged in, it's constantly ringing into the office, because when the humidity goes up, the wires start crossing and it just becomes a mess. That's a common theme in the buildings, or you'll have rooms that drop out, rooms that are too loud. So by putting in the wiring, what we're able to do is get a Cisco clock, PA clock system that will be over the TVs, not only is it a PA, not only is it a clock, and it's an interactive PA, it's a clock, it's also a notification device. So we already have a service through Cisco, if someone dials a code on the phone, it puts a lockdown message up on that PA, and also notifies 911. So it brings up some really good safety features for us as well. Wiring project under Smart Schools, that was the port, and it really is a nice safety feature, I know the SAVE team saw it and they liked it, and they were really, so this is a test, we're using North Park to see if this is something we'd want to adopt district-wide, and we could phase it in over time. Smart Bond applications, as we said, what's going on with that is, from the time that we wrote the application to the time we actually spent the money, prices changed significantly. So money has to be shifted around, so I had to write an amendment so I could claim the money in the right categories. The way the system works, I can't actually claim the money right now, because I can't get the numbers to balance out. So I had to write an amendment to shift a couple thousand dollars around so I can do the right claiming, we're waiting for that to be approved, I'm hoping March 6th. Smart Bond 2 is about the video server, we're waiting. Both of those applications are in the same place on the website, I'm hoping it means March 6th will get approved. The remaining funds, roughly $470,000, we have not made a determination how those will be spent at this time. It could be used for FDR wiring, it might be used for something else. Initiative further down the road, again, the FDR wiring is a big one, that picture is our main server closet, and what I mean by our main server closet, our signal comes and goes from BOSI's into our high school into that room, and to the right of that spaghetti mess of wires, you see a black pipe there, that's actually a live steam pipe. Now, generally, you don't put expensive networking equipment next to steam pipes, we have. Right next to this room is the old-school store, the copy room, whatever you want to call it, Mr. Partey, Mr. Garcia at the time, agreed to let me take that room over. So I have a really appropriate space for our main network closet. It involves moving all that equipment and the wiring into that new space, it's a big project. This, this is something I had talked about with my team way back when, when we heard about the referendum, it became a really good opportunity, because when you start taking down walls and everything else, you're going to damage wires. And even the architects will tell you, the PA system probably won't survive this project. So we're looking, is this an opportunity to really redo the whole system? We're still in planning stages, it's still ideas, nothing's set in stone, but we're, we're working on the planning, so if it's supported, we can move forward in that direction. If, preliminary estimates, around $300,000. If we can do it, we can do it through a combination of the referendum money, which we'll pay for the pods, E-Rate, Smart Schools, and actually a fourth one, the district budget. Our department staffing, myself, Michelle Bezner, our secretary, Terrez, Bobby, Chance, those are our three main network technicians, they keep us and everything moving in amazing ways, they're the quiet people in the background who just get it done. Doug and Jan are our two Chromebook technicians, they spend all day, every day keeping that fleet of Chromebooks up and doing a lot of in-house repairs. I will tell you that both of them have learned how to swap out keyboards, how to swap out screens, they're becoming Dell-certified technicians, so that we can do most of the work in-house and save the district some money through the repairs. And then, in the budget process, I've asked for a 1.0 technology integrator, we have been working with BOSI's this past year, we are supposed to have 1.2 people, they can never find the other 0.6, we've had one person, a 0.6, covering the district. Every research report I've read about this, if you have a technology initiative, you can buy all the shiny flashy stuff you want, if you don't have the PD to back it up, it's going to sit on a shelf. So that person is so important. So that 1.0 may not be a body, it could be a combination of BOSI's and somebody in-house.
Well, it'll be bodies, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it could be multiple people.
We don't have robots to do it, yeah.
Right.
But it might be two part-time bodies, maybe part BOSI's, part in-house.
Right. So we're still working on that, but that position is key in order to keep the technology used in really good effective ways. What I will say is that Julianne Ross Kleiman, who is our current person at BOSI's, is very busy, and she tracks her hours for me, I know who she's worked with, what she's worked with a lot, how long she's worked with them, she's in classrooms working with teachers every, all, every day that she's here, and she's running K-12. And I think she's doing a pretty good job helping us move it along. And there you go, there's the team. Any questions?
Yeah, Rick, you said you're working on North Park and the wiring, is that going to happen with the capital project in North Park? Or are we doing that beforehand, and will that be affected by it?
So the wiring is already in place, the only thing that has to happen now is actually literally hanging a box on a wall and just plugging it in, so.
And we don't think we're going to have issues with wiring? Because you said the wiring at FDR was not going to survive.
That's a demolition.
Yeah, much bigger construction project.
It's a different, different scope project. And I, I'm not sure how, you would know how all these things work, but if they damage wiring in the process of North Park, I assume the company has to make good on it, because there's wiring everywhere.
Well, it'll always be a challenge as to who damaged it.
Right.
Yeah, so, so it'll be a lot of finger pointing in that case.
Of course.
So the best we can do is try to keep the work and wiring separated, that's really what we're.
The reality is all the wiring is in place, so there's not much I can do about that. Hanging the box on the wall really shouldn't impact any of the work that's happening there, at least from what I know of it.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question also, in 2022 and '23, we're going to be buying desktops?
Yes, so, desktops is a real, is that the desktops for labs, you mean, or?
The instruction desktops, desktops for labs.
We always have desktops, even though we have Chromebooks, we have desktops. One of the things we know is that if you want to present a video to a class, you need a desktop to do it. We have administrative desktops, secretaries tend to use those, they're not using Chromebooks. You do need some machines that have resident programs, a Chromebook, as most of you know that are using them, there's not a program on that, you're just on a website. So there are some needs for desktops, what we're seeing, where we used to have four or five desktops in a room, we're getting it down to one or two, because people now have Chromebooks that they can use. So the reason it's still up there is we still need to replace a certain amount, I was looking at our, we use a program called SchoolDude, it automatically searches our network and pulls all the device information in. Most of our equipment, four years ago, was over 10 years of age, which is unbelievable for a computer, lifespan is typically, they recommend five, six years, we're pushing to 10, 12 years. Now, our older equipment is around seven or eight years, and it's probably, if you don't take the Chromebooks out of it, just desktops, most of our desktop equipment is equipment is around four or five years old. So I think we're kind of in that sweet spot now. The key is not to fall behind again. Key is to keep it up.
What sort of videos are you showing on, I mean, why do you need a desktop?
So what happens with, when teachers try to use Chromebooks, because it's a wireless device, there's no way to actually connect a cable into it. The wireless is great until every teacher in that hallway starts showing videos, and then you start to get video lag. They're showing YouTube, they're showing TeacherTube, they're showing all the good educational videos that are out there. We have a subscription for Discovery Education. And every kid can access it. And there's a lot of great educational videos on there. But the more people you have hooking into the wireless, and streaming video, the more chance you get for lag and stutter. So for your main presentation machines, you really want to have those hardwired in, just so you don't get that lag and that stutter.
And your Chromebooks don't have a hardware?
No.
Oh.
Nope. It's all wireless. And we have a, we have, I mean, Forrest, the way you supported it, Forrest and the team did a great job installing this wireless, wireless system. We really are in good shape. We've got great coverage. We still have issues, though. There are some things that we need to be able to fix as we go into the next round with the wireless access system. But we are, hearing the war stories from other districts, we're in great shape with the system that's here.
Um, good, we probably have more questions.
Technology's going to change in the next two years.
Yes.
So how locked are you on this? Because we're hearing all kinds of things of how wireless is going to change.
So say more about that.
5G.
5G.
Oh, yes.
6G, too.
How locked am I into this?
Yes.
Not at all, actually. I mean, it's actually, you're right, technology's constantly changing. So those, for instance, to replace Chromebooks is based upon a Dell model, we've been fairly consistent with the Dell model. They run $300 for the device, $50 for the license. Dell, like every other Chromebook company, the reason we stick with Dell, by the way, is their power brick. Every Dell power brick has the same barrel plug, so I don't have to worry about power cords, I have spares like crazy. Except every Chromebook, because Google said they had to, is changing towards a USB-C power port. So now I don't know if it's going to be a $300 charge per Chromebook, it may go up, it may go down. So I'm not married to it, but I think it's better to have a long-range plan than just guessing. The big thing for me wasn't about the Chromebooks or desktops, it's about the wireless IP, wireless controller, firewall, those really big expenses. The Chromebooks and everything else is just trying to balance out where the hotspots are, where the big numbers come in.
Okay.
It can change. It absolutely, and I think it will have to. That's not going to be the same one I show you next year, or two years down the road. I think it could change.
And you haven't tested a USB to network plug-in for the Chromebook?
No, we haven't. We haven't. Yeah. We could.
A lot easier in a desktop, right? And a lot less hardware to, you know, get a $12 part for to plug in than the desktop. But just something to think about, that you can do that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to look at that. I honestly don't know the answer if the Chromebook could be a better option than a desktop. Desktops tend to have a little more power to them. And a little, we configure them with decent amount of memory.
Well, is it, is it network, or is it the Chromebook, right? I mean, lag is from the network, Chromebook is going to be.
Right. Yeah.
I, to, just clarification, so we only have a 0.6 technology integrator?
We had contracted for 1.2.
Okay.
With Bosse's. I sat through, I believe, two rounds of interviews, and each time they came up with a candidate, and each time the person found another job elsewhere.
Yeah.
I think they did four rounds total, trying to find that other 0.6, and they were never able to. So in January, Chris Fiorentino, there's a name, he's now working at Bosse's, he, we talked about it, and I said, Chris, just stop. We'll muddle through with our 0.6 for the remainder of this year, and want to figure out what to do to make this better next year.
So is the money, a money problem, salary?
It's a, it's a half-time position.
Yeah.
And we're all looking for full-time.
I'll jump in here, too. So, we're working with HPTA, because there's still some question out there about exactly how does a teacher on assignment work? And, and we're working, you know, very well with them. With Bosse, going through Bosse's, the attempt to go through Bosse's and have a 0.6, 0.6, they can't give us a full-time person, because then it's not a shared service. But they could have done a 0.6 for elementary support, and a 0.6 for.
Secondary.
Uh, secondary. And then, you know, that was one way to do, to, to look at the tech integrator support. Well, after a couple of years of attempting to do this, and you find somebody good, and they get hired, and blah, 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 we are looking to move it in-house now.
Yeah.
First of all, the model that we have with our AIS program, our Academic Intervention Services program, we, where we have teachers delivering some services to students, but also providing support for teachers, works really well. And then you have them full-time, and they stay here, and they accrue seniority, they accrue longevity, the whole nine yards. So, we're looking at next year, because the person who we do have 0.6 from Bosse's is very, very good, and people respond, well, is maybe doing a hybrid next year, a 0.6, continue the 0.6 with Bosse's, but then put in, we'll be posting for a part-time person, so somebody who's currently one of our teachers, will part-time be a tech integrator. So they'll teach a couple classes, and then the remainder of their day, they'll be doing the tech integration work. So next year, our goal is to get up to that 1.2 or 1.0 again, by doing a hybrid, and then we'll take it from there. Ideally, I, I think where we should be heading is two in-house people, full-time, no student assignment. And we're working with HPTA. Our attorneys tell us that, that you can have a teacher that leaves the classroom, and is on special assignment, and still continues to accrue seniority. But there's some question on Nicetend, so we're just ironing that out. There's no question that you can have somebody teach kids for a couple of periods, even if it's just two periods, and then be an adult instructional leader for the remainder of the day. So that's not in question, so that's why we're going to do a hybrid, keep the Bosse's person that's done well, people have really responded to her instruction, and then do an in-house person.
Yeah. You know, my, my initial reaction is, I'm sure we're missing a lot of opportunities, you know, not having someone to help, you know, it's really, you know, we're buying all this technology, we're putting it in the classrooms, I'd just be really curious as to how, how well it's being used.
That's my June report.
That's the June report. And also, in, in, in addition to the, the, the people who, the technology integrators, we offer a lot of in-house PD before and after school, so it's not just those two.
Yeah.
A lot of in-house, a lot of teacher-to-teacher sharing, informally, formally. We're looking at the preliminary results of usage, and, you know, it's interesting, preliminary results show the usage higher at the middle school than the.
Sometimes it's what you don't know that you don't know.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And one other thought, and early on, you were talking about the Chromebooks and your program for bringing them back, is there being returned, being able to evaluate them better? Tell me, can you take me through, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but can you take me through what that evaluation is? I mean, what, what are you looking at when you, and how, you know, because it sounds like it's a fairly quick process, but, yeah.
It should be. So what we know is, there's three main components to a Chromebook. The case, the Chromebook, and the power brick. So that's the first level of check. Second level of check is, have they spilled water on the keyboard? The only way to know that is to turn it on and try and do a little typing. So what we're going to have the kids do is, have the Chromebook on as they walk up to the table, collect the stuff, to open up, have them log in, they can log in, it works. Check the screen for cracks, that's the other big breakage.
Mm-hmm.
And just check the case, and then you're done. So we're going to look at the screen, the keyboard, the case, the brick, the Chromebook itself.
Yeah.
Just a couple bullet points.
Yeah. So, so my first thought is, is trying to manage expectations. Is there something that could be distributed earlier in the year, or as we approach June, that a student, either a student on their own could do a review to say, okay, what do I have working? You know, kind of a self-evaluation, and maybe even with a parent, so that the surprise isn't.
There's no surprises.
Yeah. Kind of cut down on the surprises. Give, you know, get them invested in it to see what it is. Just an idea, just a thought of.
No, it's a good idea. We've talked about it. Where we are on the process is, my goal was March, that I wanted to sit with the two building principals, it's really Eric, Sean, and Rick Partey.
Mm-hmm.
And talk about, we need to collect them earlier, but it's going to look like this, and it's going to solve some communication and angst. It's a piece we had talked about, we haven't gotten it yet, because we need to see if they can support the timeline and the process we're proposing. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just wondering, with everybody having Chromebooks now, did all the students now have them? Where are we in the process of moving towards our textbooks being on the Chromebooks, as opposed to having actual textbooks?
I can't speak to the textbook piece. What I can speak to is the software piece. We have a process in place for software requests. And part of it involves a teacher filling out an application and saying, I've talked with these people. I bring those applications to the directors' meeting, re-review them. If we feel that there's merit to that software, and it's going to be used by more than just one person, because that's key, we budget forward, and then we purchase.
Okay.
And then we track usage. And I have multiple ways to track usage now, too. How many teachers are using it, how many students are using it. So, is it replacing textbooks? In some cases, yes, because, for instance, our foreign language courses are using Rosetta Stone to work with kids in foreign languages now. So I think, yeah, there is that transition happening. I don't know if I can speak to what's happening with the textbook budget, if that's decreasing or not.
Well, last time Kim was in, it was very little difference in price. That, the electronic price hasn't come down. And I would think until they, and if it's possible, I know when my daughter was in college, she bought chapters online, because the professor said, we're going to look at chapter 8, 9, 10, 15, 17, and 25.
Yeah.
So that's all she bought.
I've heard of that, where the professors can actually custom-make the textbooks by putting chapters, that's, it's amazing.
Yeah. So, it should be cheaper, but it, some, some reason it isn't.
I wasn't only concerned with cost, though, I was, I was just concerned with usage as well. Like, I was just wondering, are we moving in that direction, and what's our rate of moving in that direction, really?
Well, Greer knows this quote better than I, because I always fumble the quote, the gentleman that was here in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That, "Technology won't replace a teacher. A teacher who uses technology will replace a teacher who doesn't."
Yes.
So I think what you're seeing is, as people begin to adopt technology, it's why we want the tech integrators, it's why we want to really get the stuff in their hands, they can use it. I think I just see more and more teachers seeing the value in the technology, you're going to see that shift to more electronic means, and hopefully less paper usage. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just a question on the wireless access points. It says next year, you're, you're planning to replace the entire district, is that?
So, I would prefer that, if we could keep them going, just replace them as they fall apart. What Bobby tells me, Bobby Calafano and Therese, you know, my geniuses, I can't do that. Because the system is so tied that that device will not work with the new wireless controller that we buy. It's, so they're not compatible in that way, and that's not surprising, because five years, six years is what you get out of them. I, I would love to push them, and we haven't had a lot of failures yet, but I've put the money in there, because we don't want to suddenly go down and lose the whole system either. What Cisco is telling me is, that's, that's actually where I started with, Cisco's recommendations of when to replace things. That's their recommendation as far as timelines. Because what happens is, they also do end-of-service life. And they say, we will no longer support the device, there'll be no more updates, there'll be no, no more support for it, you're on your own if you stick with it. So our current wireless access points, they're five years old, but they're not going to be supported. So we run the risk of catastrophic failure, if you will. It, it, yeah, it's, it's hard decisions. This is not cheap equipment.
Right. Yeah. And to replace everything before failures, I mean, and the odds are, every single access point isn't going to fail, right?
Right. But you're going to have five or 10 that fail, we don't have that many anywhere. And you can't buy them anymore. So that means those five, six, seven spaces now are without wireless, until you get to the critical mass where you do replace the whole thing. So in some ways, it's just better to stay on top of the equipment, and not run into those, that cascading failure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, I think, just a comment that, you know, first of all, thank you for long-range planning, or setting it up. But, you know, we haven't had a technology committee, and we're weaving it in slowly to our strategic planning. But I think that there's so much expertise in our community, and even on our board, that I think, moving forward, it might be good to pull a group together, you know, an ad hoc focus group to come in and, you know, brainstorm and collective thinking, and I, I think that would be a good way to go. We have resources in our community, we have resources on our board, and I, and I would think that we could put together something ad hoc, where, you know, we're inviting in the people who are in this field to say, hey, like, what are you seeing, what are you, you know, maybe, maybe we'll get something out of it, I don't know.
Yeah, my team would appreciate that.
What's that?
My team would appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
We tend to, we tend to connect with other school districts.
Right.
And sometimes it's not the school district voice that you need, you need the, the other voices to chime in.
Yeah. Yep. So I think maybe it'd be a good time, maybe, or, or next year, to put a little something together, where we take, take a look at this, and take a look at, uh, all kinds of our, whether it's infrastructure, and some of the.
Yeah.
Other things that are non-instructional, or, well.
Provide the platform for instruction.
I just want to burn that image into your heads, if I could.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you all, thank you.
Next up is the budget tax cap presentation, Linda.
Hey, um, good evening. I didn't sit next to Doug tonight, but I can still feel him pressuring me for the time. So, tonight is, is really the first time that the, there's a lot to the budget, we're finally getting there, we're getting closer.
He's teasing you.
So, I'm actually encouraging the board to ask questions as we go along, because there's really three parts tonight. I'm going to talk about the tax cap, I'll talk about the budget, I want to talk about the Bosse's capital project again. Actually, there's four parts, and I'm going to talk about the additions and the savings so far. So at any time, if the board members would like to ask a question, we could stop, or we could do it all at the end. So, before I actually show you the tax cap calculation, I just want to go over the two factors that are on the screen now. To me, these are the two most significant, because I think they're the parts of the tax cap that people don't always understand. The tax cap calculation itself is a multi-step process, but the two factors here have a big impact. The tax-based growth factor is always school district-specific. It represents a quantity or physical change in real property in the district. For 2019-20, the rate for the school district, for Hyde Park School District, is 0.5%. For 2018-19, it was 0.58%. Elliot Garcia and I always joke around that that was, it was 0.8% or 0.08% higher last year because of Perry's House.
What's better, higher or lower?
Yeah, we want it to be higher.
Higher's better.
So the allowable levy growth factor is the inflationary factor. That's the same for every school district in the state, and it's the lesser of 2% or the change in the Consumer Price Index from the year before. This is the factor that most people, this is the reason why most people refer to the tax cap as a 2% cap, when in fact, this is the only portion of the calculation that's limited to 2%. And in 2018, the change in the Consumer Price Index was 2.44%, so we'll use 2% in our calculation. So here, I'm just showing the calculation in the last column compared to the 18-19 calculation. For 2019-20, our allowable tax levy is $61.9 million. It's actually $61,912,540. That represents a 2.9% increase over the current year's tax levy. In the middle of the page, you'll notice the pilot payments for the coming year have increased about $10,000. The change is from $33,611 to $43,013. That's mainly due to the Underhill Solar Project. That was about $10,000. The, that number reduces the tax levy limit. So this pilot, or that number actually, next year will be even higher, meaning it will have an effect on our tax levy next year, because we'll have the Bella Field Project that comes into effect for the 2020-21 school year. And we'll also have the Salt Point Solar Pilot for 2020-21. And I know there's talk, too, of another pilot coming on for the Saki Brewery. I'm just not sure what year that'll affect, when it'll come to. And then at the bottom of this page, you'll notice the capital levy exclusion for the coming year is $1.8 million. It's a change from $1.5 million from last year. When we were discussing the capital project before the vote last year, the local share of capital projects was increasing to accommodate our coming, our current capital project. So now our local levy right now is at, or our local share is $1.8 million. And because that's higher, that actually increases the amount that we can levy. If we didn't have that, if the amount stayed about $1.5 million, our tax levy increase would be about 2.5% again this year. Okay, so if there's no questions about the tax cap, I'll move on. Okay. So here we have our budget to budget so far. This has already changed since I created this presentation. When I present next, on the 28th, I'll have new updated information. But as of right now, we're showing a $2.8 million increase in expenses. I did separate BOSI's contractual and supplies. I used to have that on one line, but it seemed to cause some confusion, because some people thought it was all BOSI's expenses. So I just separated those out. The first payment for the BOSI's capital project is $392,400. It's included in the BOSI's line. Gas and heating oil are included in the supplies line. We increase those budgets based on expected usage and potential increases in prices. So this is the first time this year that I'm showing the revenues budget. The revenues budget must always match the expense budget. So here, we're showing that we will levy the taxes at the maximum amount of the 2.9% increase. State aid shows a decrease. I added a slide for state aid. It's next. I'll talk about that in more detail when we look at that. The other revenues includes interest income, health and welfare billing for non-resident students that attend St. Peter's. Basically, we pay for the nurse that's there, and we bill other districts. We have billings to other districts for foster students that attend Hyde Park Schools. There's rental income from the Hyde Park Elementary leases. We have Medicaid reimbursements for services that we provide to students that are Medicaid-eligible. And we also have federal impact aid. That's basically payments in lieu of taxes for federal properties.
Linda, can I just ask a question? How long can we keep up fund balance appropriation? We're already almost $2.8 million. If we didn't do that, we would be reducing programs, reducing people, which is a good, you know, it's good that we can maintain things, but that can't go on forever. Do you have an estimate on how, when is this going to run out?
Well, that, we've been doing things to mitigate that losses, that loss. Like, every year, since I've been the business official, we don't always hire back all of the retired teachers. We have been looking at other ways to save. When we had done our preliminary projections for long range, we were assuming a 10% increase in health insurance, because that's what it was that year. And it's been a little bit lower since then. When we do have our budget, our expenses have to meet the revenues. So if we're levying at the maximum amount, we may have expenses that we won't actually realize, but we have them in the budget to match our revenues. So I think as long as we're vigilant and we're always considering what we have in the budget and what should, what we could reduce by, that we would be okay for a few years.
Right. But it's not like we had $2.7 million left over from last year. So...
We do. We actually do have that.
We do? Ah, okay. Then my question would be, for the community, how come?
Because we are, because the main reason is...
And why did we budget that much? I mean, I'm just, you know, I know we have to do it, but I think the community should know.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I know where you're going. So when we levy, when we levy at the maximum, we're protecting our ability to levy taxes in the future. If we were to set the tax levy below the maximum amount, we would, we would limit our ability in the future to raise taxes when we don't have fund balance, and we might need it.
Okay.
But also, isn't it true that if you budget X for, say, fuel, and it's a mild winter, and you spend less than X, there's a lot of variable cost that would help put more money back into the fund balance?
Yeah. We know where we do have the variables. We have it in fuel, oil. Sometimes we put some in the special ed costs, because we don't know if students might move into the district that needs special services. And when we budget for health insurance, we assume that everyone will have the same plans in the next year as they do in the current year. And sometimes people will actually leave the more expensive plan to go to the least expensive, or the lower expensive, least expensive plan.
And we don't have, you know, we don't have the benefit of, I mean, one of the things that the School Facilities Association has campaigned for is having maintenance reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have a maintenance, you know, everybody else puts money away for a rainy day. Unfortunately, we can't do that. We have to build it into the budget each year.
Okay. I just wanted the community to understand.
No, but I, and I agree. I think that the people need to understand that. It's nothing other than making sure that we've got the money in the budget to do what we need to do. I won't say in the worst of conditions, but in worse-than-normal conditions.
Yeah, we want to, we want to maintain the programs that we have. There are other things, like, oh, Mr. Wirth was talking about the technology. We can imagine those expenses will go up every year to keep a certain level or to get where we want to be. And unless it's a capital project, we can't reserve for that either. We can't reserve for the pensions for the teachers. We can, yeah. So before I move on, we do have a new revenue source on here. It's the inter-fund transfer from debt service fund. That was part of the capital projects plan, too, that in 2019-20 and 2020-21, we would use some of our debt service to pay down some current debt we have, so that that local share of the debt service wouldn't go over that $1.8 million. And as always, like, we already talked about, the fund balance appropriation is used to balance the budget, because our expenses have to match our revenues. One thing, we don't have the final numbers for state aid yet. The numbers that I used here are the governor's proposed amounts. Last year, the legislative budget came in higher than the governor's proposal, and we actually reduced the amount of the fund balance appropriation. There hasn't been a lot of talk that that might happen, but hopefully by the end of this month, we'll know how much we're actually getting in state aid. So this is the detail of the state aid, of the different categories of state aid. I've never discussed this in detail during a budget presentation, but because we are showing a decrease, I just wanted to take a few moments to go through the different categories, explain what it is, and explain why we're seeing some decreases. It's important to know that this chart compares the 2019-20 governor's proposal to what we actually had in the adopted budget for 2018-19. If anyone were to review the governor's proposal, it would show that overall, we have a 1.5% increase in state aid. But we had added money to our excess cost aids last year, because we had students move in that needed special education services, and they moved into the district after the governor's proposal. So it wasn't included in the amount that we were expecting, what we actually expected to receive. So last year, near the end of the year, we had higher expenses, but that meant we were getting more aid this year. We haven't had a large influx of special ed students this year. I did talk to the special ed director, and I reviewed the information that was provided by the, in the governor's proposal and compared it to the information on the students that we have. And I don't think it would be a good idea to increase those excess cost aids this year for that reason. So foundation aid, that's the first aid on the chart. That's the largest unrestricted aid category. So it's really our general fund aid. It's a formula-based aid and was designed to determine how much it costs to educate a student and how much of that cost each district could afford. Now, each district's amount is different. It's based on a formula. Like I said, it's based on, there's a regional cost index. They look at the value of the property in the district. They look at the number of special ed students we have. And the state comes up with a number on how much it should cost to educate students and how much our taxpayers can afford, and they give us the difference. There's always been a lot of controversy about foundation aid since it was first introduced in 2007, 2008. First of all, it was frozen for quite a few years until just recently. It's never been fully funded, and a lot of people claim that the foundation aid itself, while it was designed to be equitable, has actually caused more inequities in certain communities. So for that, we're seeing a 0.59% increase. Incidentally, I did a project for my class, and I showed that to get a 90% graduation rate, schools would need about $7,000 more per student than the average school district has in New York State. It wasn't peer-reviewed. It was my own analysis, but I found it very interesting. BOSI's aid is an expense-based aid. School districts receive aid on the qualified expenses through BOSI's based on their individual district's aid ratio. Our ratio is 67%. Even though we use BOSI's a lot, because we have declining enrollment, we are not expecting to spend as much next year as we did in the years past. So that's why we're showing a slight decrease there. So the excess cost aids, that's the high-cost excess cost aid and private excess cost aid, those are aids for special ed students that receive services either in public schools or private schools. There's a long, complicated formula for both. Like I said earlier, I had increased those over the governor's proposal last year, because I knew we would be spending more money and that we would actually generate aid on that. I'm not changing the governor's proposal, because we don't have the students to back that up for next year. Now, the hardware, technology, software, the library and textbooks aids, they're all based on expenses, too. We get a certain amount for every student that we have in the district. So the reason that those numbers are decreasing is because enrollment has decreased. The transportation aid is also based on what we actually spend. Our transportation aid ratio is 60.1%. So for all of our qualified expenses through the transportation department, we get 60% back the next year in aid. The high-tax aid, that's a special aid. It's target, not every school district receives that. It's actually based on the levy overall and the income of the people in the district. So because of the ratio for that, our school district has been receiving the same amount for the last few years. So they haven't updated the formula. I don't know what it would look like if they did, if we would receive less or if we would receive more. And then the building aid is based on our capital projects. Our current rate is 64.7. Like, when we were doing the project last year, it was 60%. So for 1920, it's gone up quite a bit. And I think next year, the estimate is 64.4%.
I would just take the opportunity to point out that there's not a nickel out there that goes toward maintaining our buildings.
Yes.
Nothing. We don't get a dollar from SED for taking care of our buildings or cleaning our buildings and doing all those things.
So does anyone have questions on the state aid before we move on? So, again, here's our component budget. We're required to show the budget and its three components, program, admin, and capital. The program costs include the regular and special education, co-curricular activities, athletics, and transportation. Administrative costs are the Board of Education costs, central administration, finance, or legal, or human resources office. And capital is facilities, operations, and maintenance, debt service, and any capital outlet projects that we may have. Interesting, I find it very interesting, the BOSI's capital project has to be included in the admin portion of the budget.
So we anticipate, well, we, oh, sorry. It's your presentation.
For 2019-20, the admin costs are below the 10% threshold that we had previously talked about, but I looked at it for the next two years, and the BOSI's payments will definitely push us over the 10%. I'm actually also doing some work with the New York State transparency requirements. I'll talk about that more on March 28th, but that changes some of our program admin capital by a little bit, too. So when I present at that meeting, I'm going to show the board where the changes are due to the transparency requirements.
Linda, is there a subliminal message that you have when you speak of administration? You know, the admin costs, you reference Board of Education first.
Yes. Because B, or, yeah, B is for board.
I assume at some point with the admin, you break down those different categories?
Yeah. Yeah. There's actually guidance from SED, which shows by function code if the, if the expense is capital, is capital admin or program. So we go by that.
Like, are you asking? Sub-admin, within admin, do you get a breakdown of?
Yeah, there's a huge list.
Board of Education costs versus BOSI versus...
Yes, yes.
So people don't think that, you know, the Board of Education is getting $8 million?
No. In the final, in the final budget, we call it the public budget document. It has every, it's the line-by-line budget. That shows every account code, and it's broken down. There's one section that's for admin, and it'll show what the Board of Ed costs are, what we have in central administration, what we have. And then when we have the capital, it shows what's facilities and operations or what's for capital work.
Just for the record, the Board of Ed costs are relatively minor compared to the...
Yes, they are.
Extremely.
100% raise every year.
All right. So we did talk about the BOSI's capital project during the last meeting, but just as a refresher, this is the project that was approved by the voters of Dutchess County in December of 2018. The project overall is $36.8 million, and the cost is divided amongst all the schools in Dutchess County. Our portion is $3,208,960. We do have quite a few students that attend BOSI's programs. We have more students in the CTE program than any other school. We have about 100, and it's anywhere from 135 to 140 kids every year. I'm not sure off the top of my head how many kids we have in the other, the other programs, but I know just at CTE, we have more than any other school district in the county. So our share for that big project is just the $3.2 million. We have to pay it in three installments. We did include in this budget, the budget for 1920, the $392,400. That's part of the fund balance appropriation. For next year, for 2020, we'll owe the $1,569,600. We did talk at the last meeting about potentially borrowing, but we got some new information since then. We're receiving about $1.2 million in additional aid. Some of that aid is from the 2003, 2004 school year, and the other aid is from 2009-10. We're suggesting that we use that $1.2 million towards the 2020 payment.
Can you explain where that, how we, how we got that and what it's from?
Ripan, we can go more, in the finance department.
Hard work on the special ed department.
Yeah. So $32,000 of it was building aid from 2009-10. I'm assuming that there was a final cost report that was filed late. That's usually when that hap, why that happens. But for 2003-4, that was excess cost aid from the special ed department. I believe that when Aviva started working as the Assistant Superintendent for PPS, one of the things that she did was look at the aid from, or the process for filing for aid... of the things that she did was look at the aid from, or the process for filing for aid, and it was discovered during that process that we didn't file or didn't claim all of the aid that we could have. So, at that time, in 2009-10, is when we claimed the aid from 2003-4, but New York State doesn't pay aid for prior years until they have the money available to them to pay it. So, when I started working here in 2011-12, I had a note, I found a note stating that we would do this money, and we've been waiting for it all this time. So, it was quite a surprise. I think it's really good timing because we do have this payment that's coming up in 2020. One thing, we were talking about reserves earlier, we can't reserve for the capital BOC's payment. So, it will sit in our fund balance, or unassigned fund balance until we pay, make that payment in July of 2020.
Save the, we won't have to borrow.
We won't have to borrow. We won't have the cost for borrowing, which would be for our bond counsel and for our financial advisor or the interest.
And the aid for the payment that we make this year, we receive total next year?
So, we'll be making the payment in July of 2019. We are technically due that money in the same school year. When I, at the last meeting, I'm glad you brought this up because I brought this, at the last meeting, I said that BOC's was worried that they wouldn't have enough time to get everything filed so we could get the aid, but I talked to our financial advisor, BPD, who's the same financial advisor that BOC's uses, and they assured me that we will be getting the aid in the 2019-20 school year. So, that's already included in our building.
Revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, it's really a wash?
It's a wash.
Okay.
But we do have to, we show it in the expense side and in the revenue side.
Okay.
So, that 2.9% budget-to-budget increase includes the aid that, includes the payment that we are making, but it also on the revenue side includes the revenue that we'll be receiving.
And the revenue is only on the, what's our aid ratio on that?
Our aid ratio for BOC's capital is 54.7. It's not the same, it's not the same aid ratio for capital projects that we have in district.
Hailing up there, Patrick.
So, in 2021, so for the 2021-22 budget, we'll have to decide at that time if we need to borrow. I think it'll depend on where we are with our fund balance. Maybe we'll get more aid that we don't know about.
Yeah.
I doubt it, but maybe. But we'll have to, we'll have to consider when we're doing the budget for the 2021-22 school year, how we'll pay for that last payment. I did talk to our financial advisor, again, because at the last meeting, I was asked the question, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who asked, what the lead time would be to get the borrowing. Because the board has already approved the borrowing, that's not a consideration. We just, we'll have about a six-to-eight week turnaround for actually securing, doing the bids and securing the financing for a ban. If we do that, during budget season, that's plenty, that's enough lead time. I have this here, but I just talked about our options. So, the next two slides are the budgetary additions and the savings. Like I said earlier, this budget has already changed, so the next two pages will be different when I present next time on the 28th. So, the first thing that we're adding to the budget is the, is a digital media coordinator for the district office. On the cost with the benefits, which is really just payroll taxes, is $3,675. I added the technology integrator here for, assuming we were adding 1.0 full-time tech integrator for $99,574. I understand now that it'll actually just, it may be a half-time person and we'll use BOC's, too. We have one full-time security monitor that we're adding for the Havilland Middle School. That'll be partially funded by reducing two part-time school monitors, so the overall cost would be $31,342. We're also adding a club advisor stipend for a Maker Steam Club at the middle school, $3,336. That will have to be negotiated with the union, but for the budget, we're budgeting the same amount that they have for the FDR Robotics Club. We're adding a JV wrestling coach for $4,098.
That's actually the varsity.
Well, the varsity is already in the budget. We have to negotiate that one, and Mr. Cunningham requested another JV wrestling coach for next year. Last year, we added the varsity wrestling coach to the budget, and now we're, yeah. And then also, we're adding back the capital outlay project for $100,000. You may remember, we had two of these projects. We were really aggressive in our thinking, and we were trying to do the three-year timeline where we have the project voted in one year, and then in the second year, we would design the project, bid it out, and have the work completed. That didn't work out, so we're actually going with the four-year plan now. We'll have a $100,000 project voted in one year, and the second year, we'll do, have the design work and the bid. The third year, we'll have the work done and we'll receive the aid, 100% of the aid in the, in the fourth year. And we expect that for this project, we'll do the men's bathroom at the FDR lobby.
I was just gonna ask.
And then in future years, we're actually going to work with an architect to help us decide what types of projects would fit into that $100,000, because that was an issue we had, too. We were trying to figure it out ourselves, and we totally overshot for the lobby bathrooms. We thought originally we could get both done in one project. So, the total that we're adding to the budget is the $242,025.
Just curious, and not really a question for you with the advisor, how we add this advisor for the Maker Steam? Do we ever get reports on, like, the value of having, like, advisor here? Like, you know, you mentioned last year was the robotics thing. It'd be interesting to see what that club did, and, I mean, did they earn their $3,000 or did they just sit there and do nothing, right? I mean, I went to a presentation from Red Hook Robotics Club that came to IBM, which was very impressive. It'd be interesting to see what our robotics club did, if anything. If it's sport, they just collected a check. I don't know. It'd be interesting to see, are they earning some, are they earning that money or just taking a paycheck?
Yeah, we've been talking about, you know, really formalizing that and, you know, kind of formalizing, you know, not some big, long, drawn-out evaluation, but, you know, evaluating them, you know. Right now, our process is if it's going well, you come back, and, but there've been a few cases where, you know, we don't think it's going well, and so what we've been able to do is work with people and say, you know, we'd like to see improvements here, and if we don't get the improvements, they've been self-selecting out and somebody new takes over. The other thing that the principals do do is they monitor, you know, really what does the participation look like, you know, how many kids are actually utilizing this service? But I think you're absolutely right, we should have a better handle on what some of the clubs are doing.
And just like a year-end report, how many kids were in it, what are some of the highlights that the club accomplished would be, would be kind of nice to see.
Yes.
Meetings they had.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to see, you know, the, some of the really interesting things that some of the clubs are doing, you know, because I think it would be a way to highlight it as well. For example, we just got, I think Linda got the letter from the, what club?
The Havilland Middle School Ecology Club.
Ecology Club, asking, they said, you know, you keep printing out all these menus and it's wasting paper and nobody's taking them, so they've asked us to look into that and so that.
They also had, they had a plan, too.
I think that's a great idea because, for many, many reasons.
For many reasons, I would like to highlight our, we, our clubs, too, and I think they could, they might be better participated with, you know, where people would join them if they, they had a list or, you know, a better list or a better understanding of what's out there.
Yep. We do have a rule of thumb then, if, you know, for when a club sunsets, you know, you know, if you don't have kids coming, that club goes away and makes room for something that will attract and draw students.
And technically, if a club doesn't have any activity, any fiscal activity, the board is supposed to close it at the end of the school year. So, that's one thing that we look at in the business office, even though we don't handle the funds, we do send the reports to the board monthly, we review them, and if there's any clubs that have no activity, we reach out to, usually we talk to the treasurers in the schools. There's a treasurer for the middle school and one for the high school to determine why there isn't any activity, but that hasn't, that hasn't happened in quite a few years. So, I know the clubs are active. So, for the savings from the budget, and like I said, we, we are changing, and I know there's changes to this, too, that'll be in the next presentation, but we're actually replacing nine of our teacher retirees with seven and a half full-time equivalents. That savings is $641,635. Now, that, all that savings doesn't come from the one and a half people. Our teachers that are retiring, they're usually at top step, and we assume that we hire the new teachers at a much lower step, near the beginning. We also are going to have a reduction of one and a half full-time equivalent teachers based on enrollment at the secondary level. That savings is $132,568. We're reducing some professional services through BOC's for a savings of $60,000, and we're moving a consultant for our trauma-informed practices to a federal grant from the general fund, and that's a $40,000 savings. So, our savings overall are $874,203, but when you, when we net that against the additions, our overall savings are $632,178.
So, Linda, the reduction for the first line, which is about one and a half teachers, and the second line, is the first line primary, the elementary age, or is that the same?
I don't know off the top of my head without having it in front of me, but it's based on who's retiring and which positions that are retiring that we're not replacing. In addition to that, there may be another one and a half reductions that's not coming from the, from the retirees.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I can say that that one and a half is also enrollment-based.
That's the reason why, yeah.
Exactly. It just happens to be retirees.
Thank you, Aviva. So, and this is part of, this is part of the work that's done to try to mitigate the issues that we might have in the future because of the tax levy and using fund balance. So, we will have a presentation, like I said before, at every meeting until the budget vote on May 21st. At the next meeting, which is at Violet Ave, the transportation supervisor will present on the bus proposition. It's a separate proposition, but it's part of the same vote on the same night. I'll present again on March 28th. We'll also have to adopt the bus proposition on that night. We have another presentation on the, on April 11th, and by April 23rd, we'll have the final proposed budget where we'll hope that the board will adopt it that night. Our budget hearing is on May 9th. That's when we present the budget that's been adopted, and the budget vote is May 21st. So, are there any more questions?
Nope. Thank you, Linda.
Sure, thank you.
At this time, can I have a motion for public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone. Saying none, public participation is now closed. Let's move on to board subcommittee reports.
The policy committee is still meeting a lot, or as often as we can, and we're in constant review of policies, so we're trying to keep everything updated as we're required to and as just updating the...
And we couldn't do this without the cooperation of the administrators who put in a lot of extra time late at night. And without Jay, we would not be anywhere, so.
That's very true. So, look for a lot of policy.
Technically, it's not a subcommittee, but I do have the pleasure of serving on the capital committee for the BOC's, and they are in the process of interviewing and hiring, for the purposes of hiring, construction manager for the project. So, they have an architectural firm that they've been working with, and now they're trying to bring a construction manager in as the process moves on. So, we actually have a meeting, a long meeting tomorrow morning to go over a lot of details, but the process is moving along they're going through, and it's very different because they're not accustomed to you doing capital projects. You know, this is the first, this is the first capital project they've done in a very, very long time, so, you know, what we think of being very typical is new for them, so.
Any more reports? Okay. So, next nomination of Dutchess County BOC's Board of Education. A discussion, and I don't have it on my screen.
Have you go into content?
Yeah. No, I've got locked out. Two positions that are up for election.
So, this where we nominate Denise for? Oh, but sorry, sorry.
Yeah. That would fix them.
Okay.
You lost your connection.
Yeah, I lost my connection.
I'm trying to fix my computer, and you're throwing away, around things over there.
All those in favor?
Nope.
No, you gotta, you're not, you gotta, down in the...
See, I'm done.
Right here, see the little wifi? Click on that, now connect to something up here. So, go up to not connect.
The letters, we have Ralph...
There you go.
Chiumiento Jr. from Spackenkill.
Ralph Chiumiento's been a member for many, many years.
And Ralph Coats from Poughkeepsie. Rick, I think it just died.
Oh, that's...
And they both have...
Ralph Coats been on?
Both indicated that they will seek reelection, a nomination reelection.
Basically, we have...
I would encourage anyone who's interested.
Is there anybody else I would want?
I agree. If they're interested and they're interested in going, I would nominate them.
No way.
So, at this time, do we have to have a vote to nominate them? We just say we agree?
It's just if we have anyone else, I think.
At this point, they're just looking for nominations. If we don't have a nomination, I don't...
If you don't have any...
Saying none, we're gonna move on.
Yeah, so we don't do anything.
Yes.
Sure, Doug, you want to?
No.
Okay, we're on to consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Oh, you know what? There was one thing that I thought was worth noting. If I could pull it up. The donation? All right, all right. So, I think we got a problem with the system because my computer now won't.
I'll show you.
All right, so...
It's an old piece of equipment for a student with a disability.
No, actually, a donation.
$254,000.
Yeah, I think that's got to be mentioned. I know that we've done that in the past, we've, you know, we've already discussed it, but I think it's worth mentioning again.
He was here when we did.
Yeah, yeah. $254,000 donation for fitness equipment.
Yes.
Is worth a...
And 30 cents.
And 30 cents, you know, from John Golden, very generous, and the fact that it's, it's again, you know, it's, this isn't the first time he's come to the plate big for us, so, you know.
Yeah, and we'll be planning ribbon cutting this spring for the new sports center.
Yep.
Okay, on to new business. Can I have a motion for 11.1 special education placement?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Dan's not here.
Has Dan reviewed the package? Has...
I read it. Did you? Okay, can I have a motion for 11.2 overnight field trip Liverpool, New York for Ben's Symposium?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So, it looks like we're not transporting these students. They're being transported by their parents? Is that right?
Yes.
And we are, we just have chaperones going to be with them during the day? Is that the idea? I mean, it's kind of interesting to have a field trip with chaperones where we're not, we're not really taking the kids, they're gonna just... we're not really taking the kids, they're gonna just be there at the same time, you know, we're gonna meet them there, right?
Right, it's because, it's, this is the NISM-O one?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe so.
To the students.
Yeah, there's two students, one chaperone.
Because the teachers are there with them for the competition aspect and coaching and support.
Yep. So the assumption is the parents are there as well?
Yeah.
Right? Okay, because I would, for, I think of, we would always want to have two chaperones or know that there's some depth of, of responsibility there because, you know, a chaperone could get ill, a student gets a, you know, if we've got two students and, and one of them gets ill or injured, you, how do you, I think we want to at least be reviewing the plan of how do we deal with that when a student or a chaperone becomes incapacitated and you're, you're that thin? If you only get one chaperone and one of the students had to go to the emergency room, does the, the other kid just go along anyway? I mean, that's kind of what ends up with being, yeah.
Or, you know, I mean.
Or turn it around the other way. What happens if the chaperone were to get injured?
Right, right.
Now you've got two students in a remote location without any chaperone.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, the parents are there in this case.
And that's why, that's my point is, so I think that just making, you know, just, I, I'm, I'm a little bit of a bug on chaperone. I got the information about the last trip that we talked about and I think we need to, you know, I think we need to look at the ratios, because I think it was like a 12 to one, I think. To me, that's, I mean, trying to, trying to watch and where, that was going to?
DC, Washington DC.
Washington DC.
It was 12 to one and 15 to one, it was two different.
Yeah, so, so one person watching 12 to 15 kids in Washington DC scares the heck out of me. I mean, just, you know, just think about, I think, I think that number should be much lower. I think we should be looking, depending, depending on the age, probably more like six or eight from a safety standpoint.
And I know times have changed, because in 1990, I took 25 kindergarteners by myself on the subway.
Yeah.
For a field trip, so.
Would you do that again?
Well, I, I probably could, but yeah.
Okay.
No, we don't do that.
All right, so it's just something I think at some point we should look at. I think that, I, I have concerns.
You know, and just to, you know, duly noted, but just to, you know, be clear that these are highly structured guided, I don't want people to think, you know, someone's trying to corral 12 kids, it's a, it's a highly structured, there's also the tour guides, the tour guides from the company, but duly noted, I just didn't want the perception being they're kind of free and loose.
No, no, I just, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I have.
Yeah, well, I, I wear a safety hat and I just think about that and students and the world is a very different place today than it was.
Very different.
And when, 1977?
Seventy-seven, in New York was worse, but yeah, 1990.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, vendor agreement with Northern Rivers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, vendor agreement camp intervention?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just.
I think you should point out that this is grant-driven, right? This is paid for by a grant?
No longer.
Oh, no longer?
So at one time, it was in Title II, it's been in the general fund now. It was, it wasn't an auditing issue, but we really felt Title II is for teacher training and it was used for Title II for several years, but it's really a camp for kids. So we believe that it belongs in the general fund, so it's been there, so it's not an increase.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5, vendor agreement spin bowls?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And that's in a grant.
All those in favor? Well, motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion to open and enter into public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. This is your second chance, anybody would like to address the board, you're free to do so.
A lot of finger pointing going on.
Saying none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board. Can I have a motion to adjourn?